Muscatine City Council will come to order. Greg Montsager, would you perform a roll call, please?
Certainly. Councilmember Spred?
Present.
Phillips?
Present.
Bynum?
Present.
Shahadeh?
Present.
Naffey?
Present.
Fitzgerald?
Present.
Brett?
Present.
Thank you, Greg. Good evening, folks. Tonight, in-depth council meeting. We'll have two topics of discussion, or presentation if you will. The second of which is by Randy Hill, Public Works Director on Emergency Revisions to the Emergency Snow Removal Regulations, or Emergency Snow Emergency Regulations. I got it right that time. The first of which, Mr. Steve Boca, our Planning and Zoning Director, on the Mississippi Drive Corridor Project.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My part of this presentation tonight's real brief. I'm here to introduce Jeff Hiligans. Jeff is the Senior Planner with Stanley Consultants, the Design Engineer, or Consulting Engineer on the Mississippi Drive Corridor Project. And we are now to a point where a lot of the analysis is completed, and some of the options are more viable. We'll go over those with you, Jeff will actually. And we are then in a position where we're real close to filing this 4F statement that we've talked about in the past, which will move us to hopefully approval and allow us to move forward with the project. With that, I'll turn it over to Jeff, and then we'd like to open it up to questions afterwards. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Good evening, everyone. Steve said, "I'm Jeff Hiligans. I'm the Project Manager for the Mississippi Drive Project." I just wanted to go over a brief presentation here that'll bring everybody kind of up to speed with where we are in the process. You're going to hear a couple of terms, maybe, that I'll throw around. One of them is NEPA, or the NEPA Process. NEPA stands for National Environmental Protection Act. And also, environmental assessment, which is the process that we're going through right now to determine what the impacts of improvements are to the corridor. The NEPA and environmental assessments are related in that NEPA is the law whereby they make the rules for the environmental assessment process. So, that's what we're going through right now. So, with that, is this thing going to go? I'm calling this a project status report. I'm just going to briefly kind of go through the project so everybody's on the same page. Project limits consist of a portion of Business 61 and Iowa 92 going through downtown. It starts at the south end, at the intersection of Grandview Avenue and Main Street, and then continues north and east through the downtown area, Mississippi Drive, Mulberry Street, and then Second Street up to the Becky Bridge crossing the Mississippi River. Whoa. What are we doing? We have malfunction here.
As I told Councilmember Fitzgerald, the new system is on order. We're in the new fiscal year.
I'm not sure how to get it back to the presentation, Steve.
I think that's built into his animation because it just did it online, too.
I got it down PDF, and it's...
Go to the third slide there.
Working fine.
Do you want to run it? There you go. Put a third slide there. First, a little bit of a project history. Most of you are aware of this. In the 1980s, the Highway 61 bypass was constructed, which kind of changed the purpose of the 61 corridor that we're studying. It used to be the through road, but now it's more of a destination corridor for business traffic and residential traffic in the city. Between the 80s and the present, a lot of work has been done along the riverfront, as you all know, to enhance the corridor and the riverfront. And that's kind of, this is kind of the next step in that process, is updating the corridor itself. And then in 2006 and 2007, a study was done to conceptually, take a look conceptually at some potential improvements, also to look at flood reduction issues, and also to look at what we might do to enhance the visual image of the corridor. And then that led the city to apply for, and they received a federal grant to do this Phase 1 process, or environmental assessment. So, we started that process in 2000, late 2010, and we're a good way through it now. You can see by the list there that we initiated early coordination, early on in the process. That's been, that was completed. Then we conducted our alternatives analysis based on information received in that early coordination. Along with that, we've held two public meetings along the way where we presented findings and received input from the public. Following that, then, we assessed the impacts and are now in the process of writing the environmental assessment and the 4F statement documents, which will be forwarded to the DOT and the Federal Highway Administration for review and comment. And we'll talk a little bit more about what's coming up in the schedule later on. Another portion of the project is a project location report, or project summary report. And that's, that kind of goes along with, and it summarizes all of the reports and analysis that we've done. all of the studies that have been done to date. So, you can see kind of the work that's gone into preparation for writing the environmental assessment. The length of the process is typically 18 to 24 months. We're more or less in the 20th month right now, and we expect the project to go a little bit longer than that 24-month period, mostly because of the 4F process that we've, that we're into now. And we expect to finish our work early next year. And like I said, we'll go into a little bit more about what's left to do, what tasks are left a little bit later. One of the first items that you do when you enter into an environmental assessment is create a purpose and need statement, or purpose and need for action. In our case, we looked at, we kind of broke the project down, the need for the project into four basic parts. The first would be improving access for vehicular traffic through the corridor. Then, we also looked at safety, not only for vehicles, but also pedestrians and other users in the corridor, and also for users that want to cross the corridor to get from downtown, back and forth to the riverfront. Another aspect of the need for the project is the need for flood control. We're looking at different options that might help to not eliminate flooding, but reduce the instances where the roads might be closed to flooding, at least. So, and then the last aspect for purpose and need would be fostering economic development along the corridor, or in most cases, it'd be redevelopment, as the corridor's been developed for a long time. Next slide. Although we're studying, you know, the whole length of the project, there are different pieces of the project that have sort of different functions and different limitations. And so, the project is, was kind of broken down back in the 2007 study into four pieces. The cover corner piece is kind of the southern gateway, and it's an intersection that has some issues that they wanted to address. So, that's the first area. The next area is what they called the high sidewalk, or bluff area. It has some unique aspects in that, on one side, the bluff goes up, and it limits, you know, expansion and things like that in that area. The next area north is the downtown area, and that, you know, that encompasses traffic that wants to go back and forth, you know, use the parking lots and around the riverfront, use the amenities that are along the riverfront, and also, you know, it's people that come from downtown and want to cross the corridor. So, you want to deal with those issues. And then the last, the last area is the northeasterly portion along Second Street, which goes, you know, through the H&amp;I complex and up to the Becky Bridge, so. The first thing we looked at was, were overall corridor alternatives. And the first alternative was what we called the five-lane option. You can refer to your packets, again, if you want to, if you want to take a detailed look at how we went through that evaluation and what the advantages and disadvantages of each of these alternatives were. But, there were basically two build alternatives for the overall corridor. There was this five-lane option, and then what we call the three-lane option. And then, of course, you also take a look at a no-build option. So, but for the build options, we looked at this five-lane option first. It's basically two driving lanes in each direction, very similar to what's out there in the downtown area anyway right now, and then looking at what it would take to expand it to five lanes through the whole corridor. As you, as you might guess, there's some issues with that. There's some narrow corridors, particularly on the north and the south end, with buildings close to the right-of-way, and not much opportunity to widen. And also, when we looked at the traffic study, the capacity analysis in that area, we found that five lanes just aren't needed through there. There's not enough traffic to warrant that many lanes for this corridor. So, that five-lane alternative was eliminated in favor of, next slide, which is what we called the three-lane option, three-lane alternative. That's one driving lane in each direction for the entire corridor, basically a left-turn lane along the whole corridor, and then in certain areas, there are right-turn lanes, particularly in the, where we, where we parallel the railroad tracks. There's a need for right-turn lanes in a couple of intersections. Another, if you go to the next slide, another variation of that three-lane is, and this applies on the north and the south ends, where we have, instead of a boulevard with channelized left turns, we just have a center two-way left-turn lane with driving lanes in each direction. So, okay, that brings us to the cover corner area. You can see an aerial here that shows the existing condition out there. You can see Green Street coming up from the south, turning onto Hershey Avenue. And then, the north leg of Green Street is offset at that intersection, and that's a currently signalized intersection. Next slide. We took a look at five different options at this intersection. You're looking at Option 1C, which is one of the options that is, that's left after we went through our alternatives analysis. If you recall, there was also, if you looked in, look in your packets, we included all five options in there, and they include Option 1A and 1B, which are a four-leg roundabout and a three-leg roundabout, and then Option 1E, which is also eliminated, which is a variation of a traditional four-way signalized intersection, but we were trying to avoid 4F impacts. Those three were eliminated, and the ones that are left are Option 1C, a signalized version, and this one is what we call the sweeping curve going through the area. You can see the, that Green Street coming north is realigned to line up with Hershey, the east leg of Hershey, and the heavy movements, which are currently westbound lefts and northbound rights, now become through movements. So, the operation of the intersection is simpler, and then the west leg of Hershey gets, is teed into that new intersection, and the north leg of Green is teed into Hershey then, and as a separate intersection to the west. Now, the advantages, you can go back, back one, the basic advantages, as I said, are simple. It simplifies operations. That T-intersection is, would work better because the major, the major movements are now through movements, and then it provides good spacing between the intersection, which not, which currently has, you know, those closely spaced offset Green Street, Green Street approaches. The disadvantages for that one include the, a major impact to a 4F resource, which is that T-straight property. So, go to the next one. Option 1C with a roundabout, obviously, that's basically the same alignment, only we're changing the operation at the intersection from a signalized intersection to a modern roundabout. This has slight improvements in the areas of safety and also maintenance costs for the intersection, because you're not maintaining a traffic signal there anymore, so your lifetime maintenance costs go down for that. But otherwise, it operates roughly the same as the, as the signalized intersection. Now, the next slide shows Option 1D, which is basically realigning the south leg of Green Street and creating a new four-leg signalized intersection there. This has the same disadvantages as Option 1C, is that it goes through the T-straight property, so it impacts that 4F resource. The advantages here are, it saves more of the developable property there by not cutting through the middle of that open area, and it simplifies the operation of the intersection over what's out there now, because you don't have that offset to deal with. So, next slide. Another thing that we looked at, other than operation and that kind of stuff, was what kind of gateway experiences we might be able to create in these areas on the south and the north. You're looking at Option 1C, and they've created, we've created kind of a feature on the, on the opposite side of that intersection as you come into town. Next slide. If you look at Option 1D, the area that was Green Street, since we moved it over, now becomes green space, and you can add, you know, focal point or features there to, for that gateway feature there. We also looked at the north end of the project, and that's where we come off the Becky Bridge, and the thought was you could do something on the side of the road coming to the intersection, and perhaps some improvements across the way on where those existing buildings are. Okay. So, the upcoming schedule here, as I said, we're now in the process of writing the environmental assessment document and the 4F statement. Those two documents go together and are submitted to DOT and to the Federal Highway Administration for review and comment. And once they concur with that, then we get, we would get a signed cover sheet for the EA back from Federal Highway Administration. And when we get that cover sheet, that allows us to go to the, kind of the last step in the process, which is distribution of the documents and scheduling of a public hearing, which is the last public, public input for the project. We expect the public hearing to happen late fall. We're targeting October right now. Following the public hearing, assuming we don't, assuming that it goes the way that we think it will, we'll, we'll write a finding of no significant impact or Fonzie document, and we'll prepare the preliminary project report. We'll, we go through another review process with the Fonzie document, and we get a signature if they concur with that document as well, from Federal Highway. And once that, once that happens, that's the last, that's the last step. We finalize our project report, and then the work on the project is complete. So, that is kind of, in a nutshell, where we're at. We can open it up for any questions anybody might have.
Is it too early in the process to indicate which of those alternatives is going to be the least expensive or the more expensive?
Well, yeah, it probably is. I think, I think if there's differences, there probably won't be major differences in costs between the three, because you're, you're realigning roadways in all three cases.
There's more land acquisition in some cases than others?
There is, yep. And there's more, probably more realignment of the Hershey segment of it, of the corridor in the, in the 1C options than there are in the 1D options. So, incrementally, probably 1D, if I had to guess, would be slightly cheaper than the others. But, there's all, there's a lot of different things that we haven't looked at yet. You know, what are the implications to utilities through there, and things like that, and that's, that really has to be further assessed before we can determine the costs.
Thank you.
The last time that we had a review of this, there were five options.
Right.
And how did they whittle it down to three? How did they decide the other two were not viable options?
Well, a lot of it has to do with what I talked about at the beginning of the presentation. We looked at all of the, all of the different options as they applied to the purpose and need for the project, and one of the basic elements of our evaluation is whether or not they satisfy that purpose and need. Now, we just, we found that for various reasons, Option 1A, 1B, and 1E did not satisfy the purpose and need, for different reasons. I can go through, on Option 1A, we found that, from a constructibility standpoint, that that fourth leg, for the, for the four-leg roundabout coming down, would be very difficult to build because of the elevation difference between the road and the nearby building. So, that was one reason why that one didn't, didn't satisfy our criteria. On Option 1B, if you recall, the north leg of Green comes in just to the east of the intersection, and that close spacing and the resulting limitation that we had to apply to movements on and in and out of Green made that less desirable than some of the other options as well. And then on Option 1E, that's, that was the variation of 1D, where we, where we were trying to avoid the 4F implications, 4F resource, resources there. And what we found that, in order to, in order to avoid the 4F resources, we had to build something that doesn't comply with any of the, any of the design standards for the DOT. So, the tight S-curve that we built through there doesn't comply with any of their, any of their requirements, and so that one had to be eliminated because we just couldn't, couldn't build it and comply with their, with their guidelines.
And that was really the one that I was interested in, was the one that had the minimal impact on, it followed the same road, but just S-curved at the end and hit the intersection.
Yeah, it's just, there's just not enough space north, you know, between that north side of the T-straight property and the intersection itself to move the road over far enough to realign it. It just didn't work very well.
So, all three of the existing options affect T-straight property?
They do.
To some extent?
Yeah. I guess what we, what we found was, you know, there wasn't any viable option that didn't impact the T-straight, not be at least somewhat.
So, do you have a crystal ball about the T-straight property?
I don't.
On Option 1D, do you anticipate more traffic going up the hill on Green?
Do I anticipate more using that after the, after it's rebuilt?
If.
I tend to, I tend to doubt it. There might be, you know, a little, a little bit of a difference in, in traffic volumes on that street, just because it might be a little bit easier to get to, but, you know, you have the same destinations up there, so as you did before, it's basically, you know, residential up there. What you might get is it's a little bit easier for things like emergency vehicles and things like that to get, to get around that corner, and they might, they might use it more often as a route than they do now. I'm not sure. I know, I don't think it'll change anything much, though.
My other question would be, I've had some, I guess, concerns from input about the roundabouts, maybe from people that aren't used to them. Could you kind of go back over the pluses and minuses?
Of roundabouts versus not roundabouts?
Yeah. On the, on the two, you know, whether it's one or the other here.
Yeah, well, you're, we're talking about Option 1C. We had two variations. And basically, what we can, what we can see is, from an operational standpoint, they're very similar. A T-intersection and a three-leg roundabout will operate very similarly, and they'll both operate very well. What we see is, is safety advantages for, for the roundabout over, over a signalized intersection, you know, because you don't, you don't have people being stopped and other people, you know, not, 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 not watching where they're going. In a situation where you have a roundabout, everybody slows down, everybody yields to the, to the people that are in the, in the circle, and it, and it ends up being a safer condition overall. So, that's the main advantage for, for the roundabout. You know, the, you know, the amount of traffic that we have here, there, there's no difference from a congestion standpoint. There isn't any congestion there, and there, we don't anticipate that there will ever be congestion there, at least to the, to the limits of what we're proposing to build here. So, other than that, it's, it's, you know, it's an incremental benefit from a safety standpoint and between those two.
We've been going, oh, sorry. We've been going through a series of town hall meetings to discuss updates to our comprehensive plan. Part of that process is that there's been a citywide map developed that shows intersections and, and traffic counts, essentially showing increases or decreases. And what I noticed is that, you know, traffic counts in that, that area have declined. I guess that brings up the ultimate question, is how far do we have to go if we expect traffic to continue to decline? I assume that's somewhat factored into your study?
Well, we, we looked, yeah, we did look at what the potential was for traffic growth, you know, through the whole corridor. And we did, we did notice, too, that over the past few years, traffic has been declining along the corridor. So, we applied just a minimal, a minimal growth rate to, to the whole corridor to do our analysis, and we found that, that minimal growth rate is, you know, didn't affect the comparison between the existing and the future traffic, and we don't, we don't expect that it'll...
Where we come off the Becky Bridge and the thought was you could do something on the side of the road coming to the intersection and perhaps some improvements across the way on where those existing buildings are. Okay. So, the upcoming schedule here, as I said, we're now in the process of writing the environmental assessment document and the 4F statement. Those two documents go together and are submitted to DOT and to the Federal Highway Administration for review and comment. And once they concur with that, then we get, we would get a signed cover sheet for the EA back from Federal Highway Administration. And when we get that cover sheet, that allows us to go to the, kind of the last step in the process, which is distribution of the documents and scheduling of a public hearing, which is the last public input for the project. We expect the public hearing to happen late fall. We're targeting October right now. Following the public hearing, assuming we don't, assuming that it goes the way that we think it will, we'll, we'll write a finding of no significant impact or Fonzie document and we'll prepare the preliminary project report. We'll, we, we go through another review process with the Fonzie document and, and we get a signature if they concur with that document as well from Federal Highway. And once that, once that happens, that's the last, that's the last step. We finalize our project report and then the work on the project is complete. So, that is kind of, in a nutshell, where we're at. We can open it up for any questions anybody might have.
Is it too early in the process to indicate which of those alternatives is going to be the least expensive or the more expensive?
Well, yeah, it probably is. I think, I think if, if there's differences, there probably won't be major differences in costs between the three because you're, you're realigning roadways in all three cases.
There's more land acquisition in some cases than others?
There is, yep. And, and there's more, probably more realignment of the Hershey segment of, of it, of the corridor in the, in the 1C options than there are in the 1D options. So, so incrementally, probably 1D, if I had to guess, would be slightly cheaper than the others. But there's all, there's, there's a lot of different things that we haven't looked at yet. You know, what are the implications to utilities through there and, and things like that? And that's, that really has to be further assessed before we can determine the costs.
Thank you.
The last time that we had a review of this, there were five options.
Right.
And how did they whittle it down to three? How did they decide the other two were not viable options?
Well, a lot of it has to do with what I talked about at the beginning of the, the presentation. We looked at all of the, all of the different options as they applied to the purpose and need for the project. And one of the basic elements of, of our evaluation is whether or not they satisfy that purpose and need. Now, we just, we found that for various reasons, option 1A, 1B, and 1E did not satisfy the purpose and need for different reasons. I can go through, on, on option 1A, we found that from a constructability standpoint, that, that fourth leg, for the, for the four-leg roundabout coming down would be very difficult to build because of the elevation difference between the road and the nearby building. So, that was one reason why that one didn't, didn't satisfy our criteria. On, on option 1B, if you recall, the, the north leg of Green comes in just to the east of the intersection and that close spacing and the resulting limitation that, that we had to apply to, to movements on and in and out of Green made that less desirable than, than some of the other options as well. And then on option 1E, that's, that was the variation of, of 1D where we, where we were trying to avoid the, the 4F implications, 4F resource, resources there. And what we found that in order to, in order to avoid the 4F resources, we had to build something that doesn't comply with any of the, any of the design standards for the DOT. So, the tight S curve that we built through there doesn't comply with any of their, any of their requirements. And so, that one had to be eliminated because we just couldn't, couldn't build it and, and comply with their, with their guidelines.
And that was really the one that I was interested in, was the one that had the minimal impact on, it followed the same road, but just S curved at the end and hit the intersection.
Yeah, it's just, there's just not enough space north, you know, between that north side of the T-Strake property and the intersection itself to, to move the road over far enough to, to realign it. It just didn't work very well.
So, all three of the existing options affect T-Strake property?
They do.
To some extent?
Yeah. I guess what we, what we found was, you know, there, there wasn't any viable option that, that didn't impact the T-Strake property at least somewhat.
So, do you have a crystal ball about the T-Strake property?
I, I don't.
On option 1D, do you anticipate more traffic going up the hill on Green than?
Do I anticipate more using that after the, after it's rebuilt?
If, if.
I, I tend to, I tend to doubt it. There might be, you know, a little, a little bit of a difference in, in, in traffic volumes on that street, just because it might be a little bit easier to get to. But, you know, you, you have the same destinations up there, so as you did before, it's basically, you know, residential up there. What you might get is it's a little bit easier for things like emergency vehicles and, and things like that to get, to get around that corner. And they might, they might use it more often as a route than they do now. I'm not sure. I know, I don't think it'll change anything much, though.
My other question would be, I've had some, I guess, concerns from input about the roundabouts, maybe from people that aren't used to them. Could you kind of go back over the pluses and minuses?
Of roundabouts versus not roundabouts?
Yeah. On the, on the two, you know, whether it's one or the other here.
Yeah, well, you're, we're talking about option 1C. We had two variations. And basically, what we can, what we can see is from an operational standpoint, they're very similar. A T-intersection and a three-leg roundabout will operate very similarly and they'll both operate very well. What we see is, is safety advantages for, for the roundabout over, over a signalized intersection, you know, because you don't, you don't have people being stopped and, and other people, you know, not, 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 not watching where they're going. In a, in a situation where you have a roundabout, everybody slows down, everybody yields to the, to the people that are in the, in the circle and, and it, and it ends up being a safer condition overall. So, that's the main advantage for, for the roundabout. You know, the, the, you know, the, the amount of traffic that we have here, there, there's no difference from a congestion standpoint. There, there isn't any congestion there and there, we don't anticipate that there will ever be congestion, congestion there, at least to the, to the limits of what we're proposing to build here. So, other than that, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's an incremental benefit from a safety standpoint and, and between those two.
We've been going, oh, sorry. We've been going through a series of town hall meetings to discuss updates to our comprehensive plan. Part of that process is that there's been a citywide map developed that shows intersections and, and traffic counts essentially showing increases or decreases. And what I noticed is that, you know, traffic counts in that, that area have declined. I guess that brings up the ultimate question is how far do we have to go if we expect traffic to continue to decline? I assume that's somewhat factored into your study?
Well, we, we look, yeah, we did look at what the potential was for traffic growth, you know, through the whole corridor. And we did, we did notice too that over the past few years, traffic has been declining along the corridor. So, we applied just a minimal, a minimal growth rate to, to the whole corridor to do our analysis and we found that, that minimal growth rate is, you know, didn't affect the, the comparison between the existing and, and the future traffic. And, and we don't, we don't expect that it'll, it'll ever be a whole lot different than, you know, from a congestion standpoint than what it is now.
Going back to the scheduling, you mentioned that the normal study such as this will take 18 to 24. We are at the 20th month right now for the study. And you mentioned that we're going to exceed the 24. Are we talking about 30, 35, 36? And based on that and after that, I know there's some tests to be run and reports to be submitted and approval. How about the funding? After all submitted and everything else, we are looking for funding from the state and federal to complete this project? What's our chances at that time when it's complete to get that funding?
Well, there's never any guarantee that you're going to get funding, but I think your chances are much better having, having the environmental clearance document in place. There are certain types of funding that would require that. So, if, having that step taken, like for instance, you've all heard of the Tiger Grant Program. That's a, that's a federal grant program that's, that's, that's put out by the DOT, the US DOT. And one of the requirements for that, to get, to get that, a grant there is that you have to be complete with your environmental process. So, we wouldn't be able to apply for that grant until this project is completed. So, that, you know, that's just one example of, of, of what the requirements are, at the, at least at the federal level, to get funding.
How many months after 24 do you think we?
Well, I think you can, you could start searching out opportunities immediately. We're, we're looking at, like, as I said, we're looking at probably February, March, when we'll have this process completed. We'll have our, our document, signed document in hand and we'll, we'll, we'll be able to show that to whoever, you know, we apply for funding with, that we have that process complete.
And, and the delay is largely based on waiting for the completion of the 4F study?
Yeah, I, I think we'd be, yeah, we'd be, we'd be closer to, to the end right now if it weren't for the 4F. The, the 4F statement for this project is, is a little bit more cumbersome than, than what you'd normally see on, on some other projects, mostly because you have a lot of historic buildings and his, and other historic and archaeological resources along the corridor. This town's been around a long time and we have to look at over 100 resources along the corridor and, and eliminate them from, from our list as far as whether or not they're an impact. And if they are an impact, then we have to assess what type of impact and then, and then decide whether mitigation needs to happen or not. And then, for, so for each one of those, we have to go through that process. For a lot of projects, it's, it's not that cumbersome, but that's what makes it take a little bit longer.
Is there any likelihood that the 4F statement is going to tell us that we, we can't do anything about the Piratine Ice Building, therefore, there's no place to go?
Well, I, I don't know that. I'm not sure, I'm not sure if I can, if I can answer that. I don't, I don't anticipate that that will be an issue, but I don't know for sure. We haven't, we haven't received, you know, final clearance from, this all goes through SHPO, which is the State Historic Preservation Office. You know, many, you know, I don't want to put words in, in there, Miles, but, but there are avenues that you can go through to, to get clearance on, you know, on a, on a resource, even if you have to take it out. You know, there's, there's mitigating measures that you would take. You know, sometimes it involves different things for different properties depending on, you know, how valuable they think it is. But there's, you know, never been a case that I've seen where, where it stops a project totally unless it's just not feasibly, maybe economically, or, you know, the, the, the community really wants to save it for, for whatever reason, or the federal government thinks it's, it's a particularly important thing, then, you know, then other things might happen. But I don't, I don't know what, what to expect with this property.
But are you, on going back, looking at option 1C and being signalized, do you think the traffic count coming in on Hershey intersecting with the Grand View Strip would warrant a three-way signal or just stop sign on Hershey and let the rest flow?
Well, that's a good question. We would have to look at that during final design to see whether, whether they would, and DOT would require us to perform warrant analysis for that, for a signal there. But since there was already a signal in that location, that, sometimes that takes precedence over, over the strict warrants. So, we, we, they would take that into account too, since there was a signal there before. But, yeah, we would have to, we would have to analyze that further.
I don't know how long you've been in town, but we used to have signals on every street corner downtown too, and we took them all out. That one down that corner probably could disappear before work would need to happen.
Well, possibly. We, you know, we'd certainly have to look at that further during, if that's the option that's chosen.
Because if it's, if it's signalizing versus a roundabout, I would rather signal it and not have the roundabout. But the, the, I guess it's 1D option is probably the best, in my opinion, because it utilizes the concrete that we've already improved along Hershey Avenue, 500, 600 feet of it.
Sure, that's a good comment too, yeah. You've got a brand-new road there.
Yeah, nice new note road that took a while to get completed, so.
Any other questions from council? Very good. Thank you, sir, for your presentation. All right. Shall we move along to revisions to snow emergency regulations? Randy Hill. Technical timeout, Randy?
When we did that, when we started that project, it's like, I don't know, are we going to do this to where we can utilize it? Or are we going to do it and then we're just going to do it all over again? Like, well, you know, we don't know. Yeah, oh, yeah. He must be, he must, he must be from the snow emergency. Then if we have somebody like. This is the one that they.
Last week, I was wearing a Christmas tie.
That's, you know, my whoops.
Might add my Santa Claus tie works because Sunday, the temperatures went down considerably.
Good work. In the snow, though.
Where's the moisture?
It's tomorrow night.
Is it, is it forecasted?
Next two nights.
I'll have to see if I have a raindrop tire.
Forty percent, like 10%. This one, forty percent chance. This one's more.
Ready to go, Randy? Very good, sir.
This one kind of curves and then it snakes. I understand, but then you put. If Meeker comes in here and puts up condos and then you have no review.
Mayor, council, during the review of the snow ice control budget in January, we mentioned at that time that we would like to take a look at revisions to our snow emergency regulations of the city code. And we'd like to incorporate possibly what is called alternate sides, or alternate parking. It's also known as calendar parking. It's also known as even odd parking. They're all synonymous. And we would do this during a declaration of a snow emergency. Now, a snow emergency is declared for the purpose of limiting on-street parking during significant snow events, to allow plows to access and clear the entire street during extreme winter storms. This policy, if it's adopted by the council, will have major effects on those who park their vehicles on the streets of Muscatine outside of the Central Business District. Why do we want to do this? Why do we want to make the change? First of all, to improve our efficiency at snow and ice control, to provide greater public safety, and there's some long-term associated benefits in going this way. We have reviewed similar policies from Dixon, Illinois, Oak Park, Illinois, Marshalltown, Iowa, Iowa City, Rock Island, Clinton, and Burlington. Discussed this with our roadway maintenance crew, talked about it at our traffic committee meeting, and we have found that we like the Iowa City version probably the best, as it fits best for us. In Iowa City, the reason we like this is that their snow and ice control policy is very similar to Muscatine's, particularly in the way that they prioritize their streets. We use a standard of classes 1 through 4. They use color codes. They've been doing their calendar parking now for just three years. And that's significant because during these three years, they've experienced all the pains that you go through in introducing a new plan. And so, they've, are familiar with the transitional process. Their program defines the details for implementation and our staff took some time to visit the Iowa City personnel, their administrative staff and our equipment operators, to visit with their equipment operators just to talk about this a little bit. So, I explained to the mayor today, it's one thing to sit down with administrative people, but when the equipment operators get off to them themselves and just talk about it a little bit, you get a lot better understanding of just how well this works and how well it does it works. And we took advantage of that. The keys to success in making this work. Randy, you want to go up to View?
I figured it would have been July 1.
There we go. Keys to success, we feel, in making this work is to clearly define the criteria for declaring a snow emergency. The public notification and education process, revising the city code, the ordinance, and enforcement. When we define a snow emergency, this is very important. A snow emergency, in defining one, is when weather and road conditions merit. The city administrator or his or her designee will declare a snow emergency in the community. These conditions could also be the result of a major winter storm or a series of small ones. Let me make it very clear, and we're not saying that when there's four inches of snow have fallen or something that specific, because that can fluctuate very much and no storm is the same. Once a snow emergency is declared, there will be a minimum of four-hour notice before enforcement begins. Our intention is to declare a snow emergency by 3:00 in the afternoon. However, if one is declared at 8:00 that night, then the snow, the enforcement of this will not go into effect until 8:00 the following morning. Time and day for both beginning and end of the snow emergency will be included in the initial declaration. We expect most emergency durations will be 48 hours. However, the ending time and date can be amended if necessary because of weather conditions. Public notification is extremely important. We'll use the city's website, cable TV, local, regional news media, and we also would put up signs at the major entrances to Muscatine indicating that a snow emergency declaration is in effect. And on that, we'll have additional information, particularly with the website that people can go to for more information about this. And if it's possible, and we believe that it is, we would like to provide a separate snow emergency line available to the public 24/7. As far as ordinance revisions are concerned, we'll have to revise Title VII, Chapter VIII, and multiple sections of the city code that currently deals with snow emergencies. And enforcement, enforcement is simple, people. It is ticketing and towing. Now, understand that as we would go into this, we would try to be very lenient and go through an education process and, and get everybody on board with how this whole process works. But after a reasonable amount of time, then we would expect people to comply with it. And if they don't, they get ticketed and they get towed. So, if a snow emergency is declared, remember the conditions. You have four hours minimum notice before enforcement and after 8:00 that night, it would not take effect until 8:00 in the morning. Then the declaration engages the calendar, even odd, alternate side of street parking during a snow emergency. The way this works is that where parking is normally allowed on both sides, on the odd number of days of the month, parking permitted on the number side of the street would be allowed. Likewise, on the even-numbered side of the street, on even-numbered days. Where parking is permitted on one side only, if the permitted side where parking is allowed is uneven-numbered, then vehicles can park on that side on only even-numbered days. Likewise, if it was odd. However, no parking is ever allowed on the side of the street when parking is prohibited by posted signs. All other posted parking regulations remain in effect. Signs such as no parking anytime, no parking here at a corner, always overrule snow emergency regulations. And all other restrictions still apply. Park vehicles can obblock sidewalks, crosswalks, driveways. Vehicles must be 10 feet or more away from stop signs and 5 feet or more away from fire hydrants. Note, the transition time between the first and the second day of a snow emergency is from midnight until 8:00. Now, let me repeat that because the significance is that from midnight until 8:00, we will not enforce the, the alternate side parking. This is the time when people then will be making that transition. So, the enforcement will occur from 8:00 in the morning until midnight of that day. So, enforcement of the second day of the snow emergency does not begin until 8:00 in the morning. So, how does this improve efficiency? Park cars are an obstacle to clean, to cleaning the street well, and they also pose a hazard that plows must maneuver around. Your street will be plowed more thoroughly if there are fewer cars parked on the street. Our goal, the emphasis is on goal, is to have the major portion of a snowfall cleared within 48 hours of onset. That's not a guarantee, that's just a goal. How does it improve public safety? Emergencies occur in the community day and night. Some are even related to weather conditions. By restricting parking to one side of the street, snow plows can clear the way for emergency vehicles. And what are the long-term associated benefits? We will be able to remove 259 no parking during snow removal signs, as well as the financial responsibility or burden of the reflectivity mandate that goes along with that. The other benefit, long-term benefit, is there's also less wear and tear and damage on our snow equipment, in particular, plows, because we'll get to the snow before conditions cause it to ice up. The first couple of years will be an education and a challenge. If it is to work correctly, then snow emergencies will need to be declared more frequently than what they have been in the past. If it is implemented on a regular basis, then it is worthwhile. If not, then it's really a waste of time. The enforcement, simple. Fines and towing are essentials to a successful operation. Public education, public notification is an absolute necessity prior to winter to make this work. The council's buy-in comes with the snow emergency ordinance and the revisions. I'd like to tell you, council, if you're hesitant, if you are looking at making exceptions because of whatever, if you are inclined to waive towing fees or tickets, then you probably shouldn't support this. I respectfully say to the council, I have had your support before only to find that when someone comes up with a reason that has inconvened them, then the council has decided not to move forward with this. I do say that respectfully, but also with the intent that if you don't want to go with this, we won't spend any more time on it. But we also seek public cooperation. Our message to the public will be have a plan and know before the snow where you will park. And as always, council, you and the mayor have a standing invitation to ride with any of the equipment operators during, during a snow and ice control operation to see just what they experience. And this is our presentation. And this is our presentation. And what I'm asking tonight is, do we move forward with this, or do we just let it stop where it right now?
I have just one question from your presentation. Streets that are parking one side only, I, how, how was that addressed again?
Okay, if you parked on it, and let's say it's on the even side of the street, okay, and it's the 10th of January, and we're, have a snow emergency, then you're allowed to be on that even side. The next day, on the odd side, which is allowed, they have to move their vehicles, and they can't move it to the other side of the street.
You just have to move it someplace.
They have to move their vehicles off the street. Their driveway.
The only, I'm just wondering how many options in some, some areas of this community, how, if there are enough options for that to work?
Options, places to park.
Yeah. Just, just raising the question.
Remember, under the current policy, i-if we declare a snow emergency, they have to remove it, period.
Yeah.
Now, they don't have an option of, I mean, it's no different than the current policy, essentially, under the snow emergency.
But it's on the snow routes.
Pardon me?
It's mainly on the snow routes that they.
Snow emergency routes, they have to move their vehicles off of that.
A side residential street, Heritage Heights, for instance, is not a so, snow emergency route.
It's not, right, right.
They don't have to.
And all we can do is hit down through the center of the street and wait till everybody moves their car, and then we get called back one car at a time.
Yep, yep, I know.
So I'm, I'm not clear on the long-term benefit you mentioned, where, we're gonna remove all of the existing snow emergency route signs?
Yeah, we can remove the, the no parking, yes. Because those are, that's a priority route.
Yeah.
Okay, and so we hit that first anyway. That's part of our policy.
Yeah.
So we declare a snow emergency, and we declare a snow emergency, like Greg said, that have to move their vehicles anyway.
What is our policy on declaring snow emergency? I want to say, one, one of the concerns I have is, if I recall, last year, we had, we had a situation where we knew the storm was coming in, and it had already hit western Iowa, and so we declared a snow emergency before a flake ever hit the ground, probably a couple hours before it ever got to us. And so if you're talking about a four-hour window, we're talking about moving cars off the street before it's even started snowing, and then you're talking about enforcement before maybe we even have an inch on the ground.
Well, I mean, if we know that it's coming and it's, in my opinion, there's no excuse for not knowing what the weather's going to be like. The forecasting is good enough anymore that we know what is coming, and we know pretty much how much is going to fall. And so I, I think that we can declare a snow emergency, we wait till it drops, and then declare the snow emergency. I don't believe that we're gonna immediately go out and start ticketing and towing. But I do believe that if people know that there's a major, a significant snowfall coming, then they need to make other arrangements to find alternate parking instead of on the street. You are going to have people come to you and say, hey, I am disabled and I don't have any place else I can park. You will have people that come to you and say, you know, my car's broken down and I can't move it. You're gonna have some people that are down in Florida enjoying it, and they've left their car parked on the street. These things are, that's just gonna happen. You're gonna have people, one of the things that we talked about is, people are gonna say, hey, the alleys are not a priority, but I can only access my garage through my alley. So if you remove the parking on the street, how am I supposed to get to my alley, or in my alley to my garage? Those types of questions are gonna come up. And I think that from an operational point of view, we have to be able to work, work through those things.
Every, every, every snowstorm is different. And I think we've declared two or three emergencies in the past three years?
We haven't, we don't declare them very often.
No.
You know, it's only last winter, we didn't declare anything. But the winter before, in February, we had a significant blizzard. And you bet, we, that's, and that's what you're talking about, Mark.
And I think that's a good reason.
And we did declare emergency for that.
To not define it as so many inches or anything like that, because there's so much, if, I understand that it would take a little while to, for people to, you know, get used to the new ordinances and procedures. Once they did, I would think that the removal would go quite a bit faster for, for given snowfall, or, I mean, when they're not having to.
If you took just a typical snowfall, knowing that there is no such thing, then Randy and his crew feel as though they can clear the community in 48 hours if we don't have cars parked on the street. Or they're moving up front side to side.
And get it curb to curb.
Curb to curb.
Rather than having this.
Or you don't have to go back.
Mulberry is a, is a perfect example of a major, major artery in the community, that they, they're doing this all day long, and then somebody moves, and then they come back and they clean. It's a mess.
It's a mess, it's a waste of time, it's a waste of gas, it's a waste of, you know, city, it's.
City resources.
Resources, it's expensive, is the word I'm trying to get out here, but it, you know, this is a much more efficient process.
Randy, is it possible for you to run that little crawler on the bottom of the TV screen?
Sure, sure. I think we do whatever we can to notify the public.
Because that would concern me, that, you know, the notification.
Talking snow in July, I hope your presentation will bring some moisture now to the area. That would be beneficial, so hopefully that will.
I think that somebody turn the air conditioner down, so it's kinda cool in here tonight just to add a little bit to the ambiance of the presentation. I appreciate it.
I think it's much-needed moisture that we need, so hopefully that will, will happen based on this presentation, so.
So how about, council, are we good to go forward with this or not?
I think we should move it, Randy.
Move on.
I think, I think, sure, I mean, like you said earlier in your presentation, it's going to be educational for everybody, and after the first year, maybe the second year, we can evaluate and just adjust from there. Is this going to be an ordinance, is it going to be a policy to start with?
It will be an ordinance. Our policy is already set.
Okay.
And so we won't mess with the policy, but it will be, require ordinance changes to introduce alternate or calendar parking.
It needs to be an ordinance in order for us to have the ability to enforce.
Sure.
And somebody in, when the first snow flies, they could just start parking on the correct side of the street and just alternate all winter long, and then they wouldn't have any problem.
Well, I think, one of the things we talked about as far as the enforcement, and I need to sit down and work with the police department on them, but they are always very cooperative, but probably, you know, the first snowfall, we'd declare that of an emergency, go out there and the people that haven't moved, you leave them some kind of a yellow placard or whatever, saying, hey, this is what you're supposed to do under these conditions. And the second time it happens, we leave them a red one, you know what I'm saying? Okay, you know, this is third time, and it's like, okay, now we're gonna start looking at ticketing and towing, so.
I imagine right now, the drivers, when they're going around vehicles, you know, they have to be extra cautious to stay further away than they, it just leaves even more snow out there.
Yeah, you know, and it's done in a lot of other communities, people. This is, we're probably a little bit behind the game here, so. Okay, with that, then I will start working with our staff and make the revisions to the snow ordinance, snow emergency, and be bringing that back to you and go out and start visiting with the public about this. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Randy.
Council, any more comments? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Salute.
Tom, it's okay. Tom, please adjourn.
No comments from the council today?
You just had the opportunity. He said, you have comments?
I thought, no, any other questions?